Good evening Upper Darby. Welcome to the Finance and Operations Committee in person and virtual meeting and the Education and People Services in person and virtual meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Dr. McGary, before we call tonight's meeting to order, will you please outline the public participation procedure, sir?
Yes, Board President Brown. And before we begin, happy holidays to everybody as we get through the remainder of this week, to the board and to the public and to the staff here in the school district. We are allowing for participation during tonight's committee meetings, both virtually, through email, phone call, as well as in-person participation. So for those who are participating at home, you can please send your comments and communications into either one of two ways, phone number 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Or you can send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbsd.org. Please provide your name, address, and specific agenda item you'd like to provide a question tonight. The board will do their best to answer those questions, and if they need to turn those around to administrators, the appropriate board member will do so and administration will do their best. Tonight, we are in committee meeting, so Q and A will take place. It's just not comment only. We will take those who are in person first. In-person individuals can come to the microphone, provide their name and address, and the specific agenda item they would like to provide a question or comment on, and the board will take that into consideration moving forward. There are two meetings this evening, Finance and Operations, and then Education and People Services. Typically, the board has a discussion for each item. And at the conclusion of all agenda items, that is when it's opened up to public question or comment. Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and feel free to revisit that during the Finance and Operations, during the Education and People Services if you need to. The meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee will please come to order. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Present.
Mr. Neal. Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Ms. Murphy Mercy. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Mr. Rogers, I am expecting Ms. Lamar Murphy, Marcy, sorry, and Mr. Neal. I'll let you know when they're here. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to my co-chair, Mr. Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown.
Mr. Brown, we just have to set the agenda.
Did I miss something?
Oh, that is correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. But he will ask you to...
Can you go to the agenda approval?
Oh, there's something missing from my script.
Thank you, President Brown.
Mr. Brown, we just have to set the agenda.
Did I miss something?
Oh, that is correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. But he will ask you to... Oh, there's something missing from my script. Sorry. Okay. All right. That's usually before it. Okay. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carried. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to my co-chair, Mr. War Savage.
Yeah, typically, tonight we have a little bit of a change. We actually moved an unsung hero award, which will be the first part, and then we'll go into the normal meeting. It is one of the first agenda items for tonight. So we wanted to go into that, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. So our unsung hero this year, this is a prestigious award that we award each year to a member of the Upper Darby School District family that goes above and beyond and epitomizes all the qualities that are committed with our success. And this year's recipient is Mr. Marvin Lee. Marvin, look on your face says it all. No, not yet. Not yet. We gotta talk about you for a little bit. So Marvin is our controller, but he does so much more than that. The list is endless. Usually when there's something good happening, or we have something positive to report, it's usually Marvin giving the briefing. Everyone is all smiles and in good spirits. He does a good, a great job of finding savings for us and looking for efficiencies, and he brings a wealth of experience, and I'm sure Craig can vouch for his right-hand man and all of the work that he does. And Dr. McGary, if you want to chime in and just speak about Marvin, that would be great.
Yeah, so there's a lot of people here that have come to appreciate and understand Marvin for who he is. I will say that when we first brought Marvin on board, there was a different expectation of completion of work here in the school district, and we worked our way to a place where we're meeting with Marvin's expectations as much as anything else. I think, you know, when Marvin came here, Upper Darby is a unique place, and I think not having grown up through the system and coming in from another workplace coming into Upper Darby, there are adjustments, and they're not easy adjustments. And I think over a period of time, Marvin is doing an unbelievable job bringing to us this wealth of knowledge, his ability to manage different personalities, as well as the complexities of his organization. It's a big deal here in Upper Darby. The true story about how Marvin got here, and hopefully this won't offend Craig, but we were interviewing for the business manager's position in central office, many of the folks that are in the back of the room. Typically, on a Friday, we do a Friday update, and we had the interview process. I think Ms. Mitchell, you were in that interview at that time with Dr. Taylor, who's now on county council, and in that interview process, when we brought Marvin in, we went through the process, and he hadn't had a business manager's background yet. But through that process, we all turned to each other after we kicked him out of the room to talk about him. We asked him to go sit outside. We all agreed, I think unanimously in the room, we've got to get this guy on board here in the organization. And so Craig was interviewing at the same time. Craig did not get the opportunity to pick Marvin. We picked Marvin. We administratively, central office, recommended Craig, and at the same time told Craig, we have your controller. We're hiring him at the same time. And if you remember that day, Marvin, it was a pretty intense, pretty intense conversation. And I will say, along with the other wonderful administrators in this district, I don't think we would have made it through COVID-19 and the handling of all the procedures in the school district without you, without your leadership. And I know volunteering with your family at vaccination clinics and what you've brought to the table here, whether it's not just here, but helping in the community, community events, I know your son DJs quite frequently for the community and the township. So you've bought into the Upper Darby family, the Upper Darby way, and I think we're blessed to have you here. Hopefully, this award keeps you here. That's really the intention behind the award. It's to brainwash you to stay. But I don't know if Craig would have any comments, but I really appreciate what you've brought to the table and your ability to adapt and to work with us here in Upper Darby. It means a lot. Thank you. Congratulations.
Craig.
Hold on, Dave's walking in. The meeting probably has to stop.
I'm usually, yeah, don't have much nerves to speaking publicly, especially with all the presentations we give, but this would be the hardest conversation for me for how much he means to me and our office. So I don't know that I could say it better than Dan. I would have never made it through COVID-19 without him and a lot of the other things that many of you don't see. So I'm beyond grateful for him being part of this family, and I'm gonna stop there because I can't say much more.
Before I present you here, I just want to speak on behalf of the board and say that the board, every single one of us, I think I've heard every single person sing your praises at different times for different reasons. So you always knock it out of the park. We appreciate your attention to detail, how thorough you are, and how much you care about the work you do. So thank you for your expertise.
Any words, Marvin?
Yeah, can I say a few words? The team. Tim, Tim, my team. I need you to stand.
Don't go. Don't go. Don't go.
All right, thank you. I truly, truly didn't expect this award. Truly didn't expect this award, and I've been here with Upper Darby School District for about three and a half years. We went through a lot, a lot of challenging moments, and there was always Craig, the team, my family was always there to support me, and I feel like I was truly accepted by everybody in the team. And the team, I don't know how you kept it secret because I feel like I shared everything with you, but you didn't, you didn't tell me. You could have told me like a little hint, but I was like not, didn't know anything about it. I wanted to thank you, Joe, Tim. We had some tough times in the beginning, but I don't think we have tough times anymore. I think we have a great team, and we recognize each other as like a strength and weaknesses. We support each other. Alan always supported me every single day. Maureen, like you go to the transportation every morning to support us. Thank you so much. And John Paul, you're brand new. You have no idea what you're getting into. But you're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Amy, we can't survive without you, and I can't name every single one like a family member, and I can talk about these guys all day long, but without you, I'm nothing. I'm here to support you. I'm here to make your job a little bit easier. I'm trying to make our school district a little bit better every day. That's what I do. And I truly thank you for what you have done for me today. Thank you.
Very well said. Very well said. All right, let me find my next page. It's here somewhere. I will now turn over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting to my co-chair, Mr. War Savage.
Thank you so much, President Brown. Mr. Rogers, would you mind sharing with us your agenda item for this evening, and you can launch right into the presentation?
Yes. So tonight, we have one agenda item, the Transportation Technology Update, which will require board action. So tonight, our unsung hero will give a presentation and introduce two technology improvement initiatives in the transportation services. One is the Mobile Data Terminal. One is the mobile data terminal, MDT, which will increase operation, operational efficiencies and improve parent communication by tracking employee time and attendance, displaying updated routes, tracking and reporting student ridership through, through a parent app, documenting pre-trip inspections and providing turn-by-turn directions to our drivers. Transportation also plans to upgrade the bus video camera system. The new system will drastically improve the video quality and also allow wireless downloading of our footage. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Lee to give his presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marvin Lee from the Operations Division. And this evening I'll give you updates on two technology updates in transportation services. They are MDT, mobile data terminal, and school bus camera system upgrades. The first feature of the MDT, the mobile data terminal, is the time and employee time and attendance. In, right now, our transportation drivers use the paper process to sign in and out of, out of the clock. But that's very challenging because everybody's shift is different. Because some drivers start at five o'clock in the morning, some drivers start at seven o'clock in the morning. So it's very challenging to keep track of that. And obviously our drivers are on the road all the time. So our drivers and assistants will be able to clock in and out of the system on the bus going forward. And the tablet is tied to our routing system. So the system kind of knows, already knows, when the drivers and assistant should be able to clock in and out of the system. So this system will also shed some extra layer of accountability to our operations. And when the times are logged in, so we will be able to see in three different buckets. Regular hours, adjustments, which is related to weather, traffic and additional assignments, and the field trips. So we will be able to see those like three different buckets. We'll be able to use those data to plan our operations more, more efficiently going forward. And one more feature that we have is that employees will be able to clock in. I mean, they, they will be able to actually view the total hours of their week. So they don't have to guess how many hours they're going to get paid. So they'll be able to have that information on the tablet anytime they want to see it. So this is actually the, the actual pictures, the examples in our buses and in our, in our van. So you may think that that destruction may be, but I mean, our drivers used to hand, hand them, have the, the, the roushes on their hand. So they'll be able to see the, the routes in a tablet. So I think it's going to be a lot more efficient, also even safer. And those locations are also approved by PANDAT. So it is approved by PANDAT. Additional benefit is the, we, our drivers will be able to pull the route sheets on the tablet too. So our regular drivers obviously know their routes. But we have a case, a lot of cases, especially now, our substitute driver have to cover the routes for the employees that are maybe sick, out sick or called out. So in the past, our dispatcher had to print out the route sheets and hand over the route sheet to the actual driver, substitute driver to cover. But they'll be able to just punch in the route, round numbers on the tablet and they'll be able to pull those around information on the tablet. And they can also get the turn-by-turn directions for the drivers as well. So next item is the student tracking. Essentially, the transportation department will be providing a bus pass. Bus pass with a barcode to all eligible students. So there will be three different ways to get on the bus. The student can scan the barcode on the, on the, on the unit or they can use the punch pad, the keypad to put their student ID information. Or if the student is not comfortable, our driver or assistant will be able to also clock you in, in the tablet as well. What it's going to do is that it's gonna, I'm going to talk about it in the next slide, but our parents will be able to get push notification when the students get on the bus. And our drivers will be able to recognize, we'll be able to match the face and the actual student. So we feel, we think that we will be able to minimize the number of unauthorized riders on the bus by comparing the actual student and the picture. Yeah, what, what, what is happening is that when they log in or scan in, the student picture will show up on the tablet. So the driver will be able to actually match the, the student and the actual student and the picture. So GPS-based app, so I'm not going to even call it GPS parent app because I feel that this app will be more used by our students than the parents because they are on the bus stop anyway. So many parents have been waiting for this moment, actually, GPS-based app. We introduced the airline style, maybe dashboard. We also have the, the text email and also the voice message app. But we're going to be, we are planning to release the GPS-based app. Which is the feature is that the, the parents will be able to see the real-time location of the bus. The parents can also set up different push notifications based on the distance, minutes, or the student ridership. So for example, if the parent wants to see the bus, maybe like a systems push out the notification when the bus is two miles away, they'll be able to get the notification. If you want to set it up based on time, maybe let us, let me know in 15 minutes when the bus is going to be arriving to my stop, you'll be able to actually get that information too. So it's going to be very convenient. And the parent validation process will be self-serviced with a student ID and student birth date. They'll be able to get that access to their particular student. And we will also consult with the, the student services before we push the information out so we can limit certain access to certain parents based on the custody issues. Next item is the pre-trip inspection. Based on the PANDAT publication 117, we have to inspect the buses before and before every time our drivers are on the bus. In the past, and even now, we're using the paper process to document any deficiencies of our buses. But our drivers will be able to document the deficiencies of the buses on the tablet. And then, and we're going to be also collecting the daily odometer meetings, readings on the tablet. And that documentation will go directly to our dispatchers and also mechanics too. So we don't have to hand over the paper process, paperwork of the, the inspection paperwork to our dispatchers. And we have some examples of what it's going to look like. It's kind of hard to see, but on the left-hand side, you are seeing the actual inspection report. You can see the bus number, you can see the driver name, you can see when, what time it was submitted. And you can see the odometer reading. And on the right-hand side, you can see who's doing the inspections, who's not doing the inspections too. So each X, if you press that button, you're going to be able to see actual inspection report. And driver can also write down the comment about the bus so mechanic can find out what's wrong with the bus through the system. Next item is the procurement and timeline. So we already have a contract with our GPS vendor, our GPS vendor's name is Where's the Bus? And we, the company already has the capabilities. So we're going to be expanding, we're recommending that we expand the contract to include these capabilities. And the one-time extra cost, the one-time cost is going to be about $120,000. Annual recurring cost is going to be about $20,000. And we did a quick calculation of the return on investment and return on investment is almost instantaneous. So our total budget, given our total budget, we're going to be saving a lot of money through accountability of the time and attendance, the time that we are spending time on the, on the phone with the parents, time that we have to print out those roushes and give it out to our drivers. We're going to be saving a lot of efficiencies and also dollar savings too. The timeline is that we want to do a pilot program with the one special education bus and one van in January. We also have one unit, dispatching unit, I actually have it in my hand, so they can play with it. Our drivers can play with it. And we're going to be evaluating the feasibility of this program in March 2023. If everything works out okay, we want to have the implementation by May of 2023. We particularly picked May 2023 because we wanted to roll this out when routes are pretty stable. And also we wanted to start, we wanted to like a test out the startup process with the ESY program. Then we will be ready for 2324. We didn't want to roll something, brand new thing out in the brand new school year. So communication is obviously very important. Parent and school communication of this program is going to be the key to success. And the, the company that we are dealing with have a lot of experience in with the communication. So we're going to be getting a lot of guidance from the company. And we're going to be working with Ronda's team to get the communication onto all the parents, community, and also our drivers and attendants as well. So next item is the bus camera system. The bus camera system is going to give us two major improvements. Number one is the quality of the video and number two is going to be workflow. The quality of the video is the, we are currently using the standard definition footage, but we're going to be upgrading that to high definition. And we're going to see the, the footage with a GPS location, speed, date and time with it. And I'm actually looking at one of the sample footage from our current video system, but that's going to be a lot more crisp when we get the new system. We plan to maintain the current camera positions, two in the front, one in the back. But we will be asking companies to make recommendations if they have any. Next item, kind of hard to see, but it's going to be, it's going to provide improved workflow. The retrieving the video process is pretty cumbersome because when we get a call or email from the school, somebody from the dispatching office has to go out when the bus is on the yard. We have to open the camera system with a special tool. We have to get the chip out of the system. We have to walk back to the dispatching office. We have also special tool to play that video. And we have to save that file. We have to go back out to the bus when the bus is on the yard. And we have to like a, like a lock it again. And that's the process. But when we have the new system, we're going to be automatically downloading that footage wirelessly when the buses are, buses are in the yard. So we don't have to chase the buses all the time. The finding the footage is going to be much easier for us too. Right now, either Barb, Amy or Pashan is spending a lot of time, spending a lot of time trying to find the specific footage. But there's going to be an external button on the bus. So when a driver notices something going on in the bus, they can press a button and it's going to mark the video so we can easily find the spot. So we can easily find the spot. Yeah. And the sharing videos can be much easier too. In the past, if the file is small enough, we were able to email the file to the school. Or if the file is too big, we had to drop off the flash drive. But we will, we'll be able to send a secure link to school with a, with a, with a password so they can see the, see the video footage. Video management is going to be also easier too. We used to manage those video footages in individual computers. So we try our best to save the footage in a shared server as much as possible. But in the past, in the future, we're going to have a cloud-based dashboard, cloud-based dashboard. So anybody can manage those video in the office, off-site. We'll be able to manage those video much easier going forward. So timeline, we have done the market research. JP was here, but Jeff did a really, really good job. John Paul did a really good job reaching out to multiple companies. And he and I also wrote the scope of services already ready to go. And we're going to be working with Joe to get the RFP out hopefully this week. We will be getting the proposals due in January. Craig and I will come, come back to this table in February, asking for your approval in February 2023. And implementation will be completed by May of 2023. We already talked to the company and there's plenty of time for them to install them. And the estimated cost is between $300,000 to $350,000. We think it's going to be on the lower end. But the PCCD grant, thanks to Wendy, we got $292,000 set aside earmarked for this project. So we think it's going to cover most of the project through PCCD grant. That concludes my presentation, but before I close out, I have to thank my transportation team. We have a great people in transportation department. John Paul, Barb, Amy, Pashan, Katrina, Karen, Pickle. We have a great team. And I truly think our drivers and assistants have the most difficult and most important job in the school district. That's why we say it's our people and I truly believe it. And I'm always grateful to work with our team. And if you haven't heard, me saying thank you to you and thank you so much for what you do. And thank you so much for you, for what you do for our students and our families. And I'm done with my presentation. I'll take any questions from you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Excellent presentation. Do we have any comments or concerns or feedback from board members? Dr. Hay, let's start with you.
Thanks, Mr. Warszacz. Thank you, Mr. Lee. This is very exciting, very much looking forward to this. And a couple, a couple of quick questions and then one probably also quick, but anyway. The first one is just as far as the recording history. I'm assuming this is one of these situations where X number of weeks of footage are retained and then are we, are there some sort of like, I don't know, industry standards or something? How does that work?
Industry standard is about a week.
A week, okay.
About a week, yes.
And that's what we're doing?
That's the minimum requirement.
That's the minimum requirement?
Minimum requirement.
And is that what we, is that sort of our intention then going?
Ah, it's a double edged sword actually.
Yes, I'm sure.
We want to have like too much footage or one week is usually what we go for. Yes.
Okay. The, the second question was that, so the, for the tablets, there was a upfront cost and then an ongoing cost. For the cameras, it just says one cost that I'm assuming is the upfront cost, but what about ongoing costs?
There's not much ongoing cost unless obviously camera, camera broke, breaks. We actually think, yeah, there's no more, no more additional cost.
So if we, we don't have, there, there are either no or minimal costs for like the storage of the video and that kind of thing?
It's all inclusive. That number that I gave you is all inclusive. Yeah.
But I mean, but, but, okay. But isn't there an ongoing cost for the storage of the video? Like the, on a server or something, or is it something we already have?
No, no. I mean, I double, double checked with the company. Is it any, any other costs that we have to bear?
But then are, so there are, is the video footage stored on our servers or theirs?
That's my question.
Cloud server. That's what I heard from the company.
But, but, but theirs are, I mean?
We can have cloud storage and they can have it. So I think her question is who's, where is it being stored? Who has control over that?
I'm not 100% sure about that question.
Okay. If you, if you could get back to us on that just because? I would assume it would be theirs, in which case I would assume there would be some sort of ongoing cost, though I would expect it to be small.
Yeah.
The last one, and I know that you probably don't love this question. I know that, that you and your team are working incredibly hard to get us as many people as, as we have. But I wondered while you're here, if you have any kind of updates for us on drivers? I know, I know that the bus for Westburg Park, in the afternoon, you know, it just gets the kids home a little late and it's not that late and it's not the end of the world. In the morning, it just, you know, the bus is just not getting the kids to school on time. So hardly anyone is taking it. And I do appreciate, I, I totally understand you all are going above and beyond, but I'm just wondering if there's any hope or if we have people onboarding or it's looking bleak?
Yeah, I mean, we talk about the driver shortage every single day. And we heard from our parents, we heard from everybody in this room about it. So, so just go back to like what we have done to hire people. So just give you like a, what it takes to hire people. So we interviewed about 300 drivers, applicants, and our yield was about 10 people. So we have like 300 people applying. We go through the, all the process. We lose a lot of people because number one, it's a hard process. It takes about four to six months for them to get the CDO license, number one. And as we hire people, we lose people at the same time. We lose people at the same time. So that's very hard. Not only drivers, also attendance too. So we always try to hire people. But what happened last couple of weeks, because we heard a lot from last couple of weeks. It was the Thanksgiving holiday happened, people get around and they share different things and a lot of people got sick. We used to, I mean, we have about 75 drivers and we had about 13 to 16 drivers out because they were sick. Some drivers actually come to the yard hoping they can be well enough to drive. They were like a waiting on the yard, but they couldn't do it anymore. Hey, I'm sorry, I have to go home. I can't, I can't really, I really can't drive. I understand what you're going through, but I can't drive. So we are stabilized now, but my worry right now is that we're going to have a Christmas break, the year-end break, and they're going to come back and, you know, get ill again. That's my biggest worry. As long as we maintain the 75 people, our drivers understand, they do come to work because they understand. And we have like a Pickle and other people trying to hire as many people as quickly as possible. But we're not, we're not there yet. Yeah.
Just to, just to add too, so we have been going through these conversations and trying to be as creative as we possibly can and just realize that our transportation workers are part of the TWU union. It's unionized work. So we have, they've been gracious enough to allow us last year and this year to contract out van services temporarily just to help get over the, over the hump. We most recently had a conversation with, with the union about expanding that and adding a few more vans to make sure we have somewhat of like a rescue service out so that the contracted services are not taking the runs from our employees that they bid and their, their runs. But to be able to have it as a supplement to help as we come out of or back from winter break to what Marvin just explained was the exact concern. So we are adding, we plan to add more vans. It's just going to take a little bit of time to go through that process, make sure they go through the proper clearances, even though they're employed with the company. And make sure we check all the appropriate boxes to get them on, onboard.
So some tiny, tiny little bit of, of light, of hope. Do we? Do we, do we, have we had any pushback from the union on expanding that somewhat or, no, okay, good.
No, quite, quite frankly, Marvin has the meetings with them and, and at this point, they see it as a relief.
Yeah.
And that we truly are, you know, reaching out to say, help them in any way we can. And that we're not, it's not a permanent solution.
Right.
Neither of us nor Dr. McGary believe that that would be a permanent solution. We want to staff, quite frankly, when you look at our normal call-out rates and a normal situation, you're around like five or six. So when Marvin says we had 16 multiple days last week, it's, that's aggressive. You know, almost triple what you would normally expect. I've always given him the okay and, and to push forward that we actually, you know, whatever the number is of the drivers you need in a given year, let's add, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine. In a great scenario, I'd love to have 10 and like a stable of drivers. So that when you have that, when you're almost guaranteed to have people out, when you're talking about about 175 to 100 drivers, you would always have, you know, subs ready to go. And like Marvin said, it's, it's somewhat of a revolving door as, you know, especially now that the market's gotten even more competitive than it's ever been. For everyone you hire, you may lose two. So it's, you know, that's our goal is to continue. The hiring process never stops in transportation and I don't believe it ever will. It's just part of the, the industry. But Marvin and his team do a great job, like he said, trying to comb through 300 applicants in one year while trying to run transportation short-staffed, you know, is a feat in itself. That's, you know, it's, it's tough.
Thanks.
Dr. McGary, did you want to share some information and then we'll go to Mr. Disnoyers?
Okay, okay, yeah, mine is brief. It's kind of related to Director Hague's comment about, so I'm concerned with, from, as a cybersecurity engineer, I'm concerned about the security of our pictures and where they're stored and things like that. So if you could certainly find that out, that was, that's my biggest concern.
Okay.
Just, just to add one thing there, and I know we've dealt with this, just generally speaking, more on the student services side versus like transportation. When Fox Royal Child goes through any of our agreements, that is absolutely an area of focus of how the contracts were written up and who has ownership of the video. What happens if the contract's canceled? You know, who keeps, you know, the custody trail of the video? So when we go through that, we'll, I'm sure Kyle will be very aware and, and definitely looks at that. But I, I think the, the one thing we will get you an answer on is, is how's it structured, the actual cloud-based portion of it?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Dr. McGary?
Just one question.
Actually, we'll go with Mr. Disnoyers, you had your hand up before.
The, the, the discussion covered my question, thank you.
Vice President Fields?
Thank you, Director War Savage. Just a question about, if I could get, if you don't have it at this time, that's fine. But later, if you give me information about how the video from the camera is accessed and what the security is around that.
Okay.
I guess the kind of thing I want to avoid is anybody bringing something in that could do the same thing, whether it's an app or they find a device online or something like that. So just making sure that the yard is the only place that can retrieve those videos. We're the only folks that can retrieve those videos from the cameras, that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, I'll totally get back to you with that.
Because it says wirelessly and so that means wirelessly, so. The security around that, I'd like to know more about.
Yep.
Any other feedback from board members?
I just wanted to make a note that we add, we haven't issued the RFP yet. So I'm sure we can add this into, you know, that it's important that we own the video as part of the RFP. And I, I'm assuming that we're, I, I know we have someone, we have a company that we're using right now to record video on buses. And I, I guess we're sort of assuming they may win the bid, given that some of the equipment is already on.
We have a very capable, three different capable companies competing for our job at the minimum, yeah.
All right, so, so because we don't have, we haven't issued the RFP yet. I think this is great feedback that we're getting from the board, but no, I guess we know that in January you'll have that for us when you come back.
Yes, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other feedback from board members? Director Neil?
Thank you, Director War Savage. And Marvin, when you, when you answer the question, you don't have to turn around. So follow up on Dr. Hague's.
Hold on, David, I'm not sure if everybody can hear you. Hang on one second.
Can you hear me? Okay, that's better, yeah.
I was trying to angle it this way.
Yeah, that's right.
There we go, yeah, all right. Still a little fuzzy, but there was, on slide eight, there's an estimated annual recurring cost of $20,000. And that includes the cloud storage, if, if I understood what you said earlier. Is that correct?
That's the tablet, that's the tablet system and.
But that doesn't include the, so are we talking about two different RFPs? Because there's a camera system and then the tablet system. Could you explain that one more time?
We don't have to go through the RFP process for the tablets because we already have a contract with a GPS company that has a capability of expanding the contract to include this program. So we don't have to go through the program, but we just have to expand and pay more money to this company to get this done. But cameras different. We don't, we are trying to place the existing camera, so we're going to need a new RFP.
Okay. It should be, okay, yeah. Is there Wi-Fi installed in the bus yard currently to access and download the videos? Or will that need to be installed as part of the process?
That needs to be installed as a part of the process.
And that's part of the, the contract that's included in the cost and?
So we have multiple options. We have district option, we can have the GPS company do it, we can have the camera company do it. So we're going to, we already talked about, we'll ask you about it. So we'll see what is the best option, most cost-effective option, and we'll come back to you.
Okay, all right, perfect. There was a, a second one I wanted to follow up on, but now. I forget, oh, it was the student IDs. So these are additional IDs that are being handed out. Is there any way that we can coordinate with student services and build the barcode into our current student IDs that we hand out in which, at that point, we could use for athletics? Right, if a team, football team goes, they're actually signing in onto the bus as well? So we're keeping track on everyone who's on the bus, so it's not just those that are getting picked up and dropped off?
It is possible. So one option is that, our preferred option is to provide the bus pass to each student. But we can also provide sticker of the barcode that can stick to the existing student ID as well. So that's an option too.
That's something I would definitely recommend because I think kids will end up losing things and having multiple cards. I, I think it's going to be tough for them to, you know, to handle, so thank you.
I did have one other extra question. I'm not sure if this will be better for Marvin or for Dr. McGary. Does the administration already have a useful policy or AR that would address a situation such as a student walking onto a bus and thinking that they can get on just because everyone else does it or because they think we're not checking? And then they're, they're the one that gets that. It is there, so to speak. Is there a dignified way that kind of situation would be handled? Because I'm sure we want to make sure that, of course, we don't embarrass the student, but also we want to be good stewards of the resources that the community is letting us use their investment on. So if someone can answer that.
Okay, my recommendation is to not embarrass the student, but let the student on. But we follow with the school to let the student know that you're not eligible for transportation. So the student doesn't have to be, you know, on the spotlight, getting like a, having to walk from the bus.
Yeah, and this is where, we don't agree, but we, we let people, you know, run their, run their, their offices. Let me provide some information on this, having been a principal in the district and the complications. If you're a school that has busing at your school and you're an administrator, it takes up the vast majority of your morning with transportation issues. Historically, in the school district, we have a code of character and an understanding in our handbook about transportation, how it gets handled. I think to Marvin's point, what has happened in its, I was involved in a conversation most recently with a parent who told me and Mr. Marshlack and Dr. Manfree to take all the phones away from kids. The kids are begging you to do it, take the phones away. And that's complicated. I'm seeing a lot of that conversation happening in schools, but I think the knee-jerk reaction of just going and taking the phones from kids and saying phones can't be in school could have consequences for us to work that out with kids. Similar to this process, if we say you have to have your ID as a part of a dress code and you need that ID to get on a bus, to Marvin's point, we have kids who show up without any of that information. And historically, prior to Marvin being onboard, we would deny kids getting on the bus. They would then be left at the bus stop. And sometimes at that point in time, this is going back years ago, there was nobody at home. And so now those students didn't have anybody at home for their child and they missed school. Or it may be a special education student and then verifying those lists and that information becomes cumbersome. So we are working on a grace period with families and students saying, this is your one and done situation to be a part of that. And that's kind of the relationship where then we're holding up a bus and we're delaying our runs. We want to establish and need to establish, you have to have an ID to get on the bus. We have to identify you to get on a bus. The problem has become historically to that question, that runs are so tight in the school district that checking the students and verifying it delays five to 10 minutes. As we know in Upper RB, five minutes somewhere could lead to 10 minutes later. And so we're working on the process of requiring the IDs and making that a part of the dress code for this. This is the, one of the slight hiccups, I think, in, in moving in this direction when you're so large, is requiring that of students is tough. But we would like to set that with a short grace period as we work that out with kids. This school year, we moved to a different process. So we did provide more because the, because some of the boundaries and some of the changes with the software made it cumbersome in the beginning. But I definitely think we need to tighten up and make sure that you cannot ride a bus without being in the appropriate area and having an ID. Because I inevitably, and the director of elementary and director of secondary, will spend hours of our day because people will find out so-and-so's kid's getting on a bus. Why isn't my kid getting a bus? And they are four, five, six phone calls easily. That's, takes hours of time trying to figure out who's getting on a bus and why. So this is going to help us move in that direction to verify who's getting on a bus versus having a printed out sheet trusting who that is or not getting on a bus.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGary. I believe we have more feedback from board members?
Yes, could even have a question. So when students lose their IDs, how long will it take, what's the turnover before they get, before they can get a new one?
I don't know the answer yet, to be honest with you.
I can answer that, yeah. We do have a process for that. So in the beginning of the school year, students get non-image IDs. That's so they don't have to wait until the fall picture date to qualify for entering the bus. So there's no image on it, but the student's name, their ID number, their school and their grade is on it. Then when the fall pictures come, they get their updated IDs directly from their schools. So as of last year, we went 100% having the IDs processed in the building. So that just eradicates the delay. So as soon as a student reports it to an administrator, there is a system in every school to have them replaced immediately.
So as a follow-up question, and I've never seen the IDs, so they have a barcode on them, I assume, correct?
They can and they have in the past.
And it's not something that can be photocopied and then scanned over, correct?
Absolutely not. We work with Barksdale, which makes sure that that's proprietary.
Director Neil?
And I like with the new system because i- if they did forget their ID, they can still punch in their student ID number and the pic, their, their picture will come up on the tablet to verify. So I, I like that feature a lot. So even without the ID, they would still see the, a visual confirmation. This is the student that I didn't just utilize a student ID from another student, like a friend, because obviously the pictures aren't going to match. So I, I really like that feature.
I think there's some really good questions. The barcode is a concern of mine as well because kids go to lengths to do certain pieces. And then the IDs, which I appreciate punching in the code. We've had kids, especially in the cafeteria, punch in somebody else's code and that has been an issue in the past. I think the image of the student and verifying it will be a big part. I did want to follow up to a previous comment that Dr. Hague was making if I can, if there are no other board comments or questions about this. Go ahead.
All right, last comment. So what does the training look like for the drivers for this program?
So that's the, exactly the reason that we wanted to get this out in May. So when things are stable, so everybody knows their route. So it's going to be the, the, the GPS company will provide training and it's going to be also train the trainer kind of training. And our dispatchers will walk them through person by person so they are comfortable, yeah.
All right, any other feedback from board members?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The training, you want to have the program rolled out in May?
May.
So you want to train the bus drivers whilst, you know, during school while it's going on, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Dr. McGary?
I'm going to follow up to, to that question about the training and when we want to begin. And I'll, I'll explain some of the rationale because I, I had a similar question. But I want to come back to the, to Dr. Hague's question. This is not to toot the horn of the administration of the district or the fact that the board expects this of, of us, but I appreciate that the board does. If you're reading the Philadelphia Inquirer, there have been some schools who have come out lately now notifying their community of maybe having to close schools for staff that might be out. If you recall, we put this out in August with our back to school with a ratio and an explanation of when we may have to close schools. In that conversation, it was also about bus drivers as being a key part of that in our explanation. So I want to circle back to the comment, the fact that the transportation department and team, although certainly not perfect, has not called me and said to me, we can't open school tomorrow because we're short drivers, has been nothing short of miraculous since August of this year. And so a compliment to, to the entire team that we have not had to close school because we've had in some days 16 to 20 drivers out in one day. Also averaging almost 16 to 18 teachers out. So when you have the number of teachers out at each level plus drivers out, the fact that the school district has remained open with what I'm hearing is a tridemic now in some reports is pretty miraculous. So that, that's an important piece. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Some of the conversations we're happening, having and we're going to have to have explore moving forward. And we've heard this by, you know, going around and talking to our teachers at our coffee meetings. Maybe we have to focus on and talk to the community as, as transportation shortages continue of high need students, special education, elementary students as a priority. And then talk about using some kind of a system for secondary education students, secondary students, maybe providing public transportation vouchers so that we can keep it going. We've been looking at that with Marvin and Craig and will continue to look at that kind of system. And speaking with friends that I coach with who are bus drivers in our school districts, they're leaving and now driving for food distribution companies and making considerably more money in that industry. When they get their CDL license from school districts, they can make a, a different jump. So we got to keep our eye on how that's happening throughout the area. The other follow-up question to your point, typically in schools, we're used to kind of like rolling out initiatives on a yearly basis. So the school year closes, we have new teacher induction, we bring people in and we hope that it works. Really, probably a lot of industry practices are too, outside of public education. Sometimes you're trying it with people in the moment, almost like food testing, to see if it's working and how it works. And so to Marvin's point, I think in transportation, if they start this in May and not at the beginning of a hectic school year, at the start of a school year, will not run into such substantial changes. The summer lets out, we want to try to implement this and then August hits and then we're like, we're introducing all this new stuff at one time to people. So I, I bought into that concept of rolling it out now instead of later on to see if we can work our way through it as those systems come into play.
Excellent discussion, everyone. Any other feedback or concerns from board members? All right, seeing none, we will now move to the time for public comment. First, we will take those from the, comment from people present as a review. Please come up to the, I was going to say stage, to the podium, announce your name and address. And the only agenda item that you will be making a comment on, are there any takers for this evening? Are there any takers for this evening? Seeing none, Ms. Buford, do we, do we have any commentary from people online or over the phone?
Yes, we have one comment from Anne Marie Pierce located at 7286 Lampport Road in Upper Darby. This comment was received on the 18th via email and it is regarding finance and operations agenda item number one. The comment begins, "How is this transportation issue being addressed? Canceling DCTS two days per week, having our children waiting in the freezing rain for 45 minutes while the bus app says the bus is quote unquote on time, is not working. This is unacceptable. If we can build two, if we can build new football fields, we should be able to hire a private company to bus our children until in, until enough staff is hired." End of comment.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rogers, would you mind reviewing for us the only agenda item that was up for bid this evening?
Sure. So again, we have the transportation technology update, which is board action to move forward. All right, we're asking the board to move forward. Marvin presented the mobile data terminal initiative as well as the new video camera system. So at this time, we just would like to hear if the board would like us to move forward.
All right. And as a review point of clarity, the RFP would be for the which aspect of that?
Cameras.
For the cameras and the extension of what we already have is the GPS and the tablet stuff.
That's correct.
All right. So do we have a board consensus to? All right, yes?
Yes.
Beautiful. And I hand the meeting back over to President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. War Savage. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting?
So moved?
Thanks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. We will start the Education and People Services in about five minutes. Thank you. Welcome back and thank you for your patience. Welcome to the December 20th, 2022 Education and People Services Committee in-person and virtual meeting. The meeting of the Education and People Services Committee will please come to order. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to offer?
For President Brown, we had to add a slide related to attendance and staffing. The original slide had two parts that were one, one was embedded and when you clicked on it, to, to the public, it didn't initiate. So we just took that image and made it a second slide. It's not a substantial change, it's just making sure they have access to that information.
Okay. So we'll say, we'll say yes to that and we'll, will anyone move to add the described item to the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The agenda has, with the approved amendments, has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. I will now turn over the Education and People Services Committee to co-chair Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Dr. Kelly, could you please begin with an overview of the agenda items tonight and then you can start agenda item number one?
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Tonight we have two items on the agenda. The first item is informational and we will use that time to review the annual, or we'll review the state assessment data like we do each year. So that item is informational. The second item is the Keystone exams winner administration window. I'll review some key points as we are approaching testing season. That item is also informational for this evening. So we're going to begin with our first presentation, which is the annual review of the state assessment data. And around this time each year, we dedicate a committee meeting to review the state assessment data with the board and the public. And tonight I'm joined with Dr. Council and three of our curriculum supervisors, Mr. Schwartz, Ms. O'Neal and Ms. Kathy Kenya for this presentation. Before I begin with the agenda, I want to share with the board and the public that the reporting of this data, as well as our own analysis, has been impacted by COVID-19 over the past few years. And in the next few slides, you will see the complexity of this analysis and the number of variables that are factors, factors in our data review. Tonight, our presentation will include the following. An overview of the district trends with a focus on our student population and the impact staffing has had and continues to have on our district data. The supervisors will provide an analysis of the standards in the tested subject areas of math, ELA and science. And we will also review the plans we have implemented to support the standards and share a few resources with the board and the public to review. The data presentation tonight was taken from multiple data sources that the school district has available to them. The information on this slide was extracted from something called emetric, which allows the district to access data and reports from the PA state assessments such as PSSAs, keystones and access tests. The next two slides show a cohort comparison, which is, which is just one report that is able to be pulled from emetric. I want to walk you through the trans latency nature of our student population. So on this slide, you will see in 2019, we had 881 third grade students tested. In 2020, in 2020, we did not test anyone due to the, due to COVID. In 2021 then, it was a testing optional year where we had few, 400 of the original 881 students take the test. And then in 2022, last year, we had out of that original 881, 537 students assessed as sixth grade students. So you will see the trans latency of that nature and how that 881 with the students that stayed in the district for us in 2022 as sixth graders were 537 students that remained with us. As I mentioned before, the impact COVID-19 had on participation and achievement are demonstrated in that example right there. A similar example comes with this next slide and our transient nature with our seventh grade students. So again, starting as fourth grade students in 2019, there were 975 students. 2020, again, no students were tested because of COVID-19. In 2021, we had that optional testing year, which 328 students of that 975 took the test. And then in 2022, 612 of that original 975 cohort or that group of students were tested as seventh grade students. Again, the impact from COVID-19 had on participation and achievement are demonstrated in that example.
And Ms., Dr. Kelly, it's also important to note that in 2022, the 612 students you're referring to are, we can only match 612 from the original 975, but we still tested in 2022 over 800 students in that year. So there's, in each of these slides, hundreds of new students that were not with us in earlier years coming into, into the school district.
Right. So, and each year, we test about 1,000 students per grade level. So you'll see in fourth grade, that 975 is pretty accurate to what we test every single year that we are testing. So that trans latency in nature, when we're still testing that 975, there's a lot of movement there. I want to share another example of how the increased enrollment and the changing needs of our student further complicates our analysis. At our October Education and People Services Committee meeting, we presented a new elementary program to support our EL students. This increase in beginner EL students is a trend throughout the school district in grades K through 12, as indicated on the numbers that you see here. Both the trans latency of our schools and the increased supports of our students and their needs are impacting our analysis of the data, the teaching, the instruction and the professional development we continue to have to provide to our teachers and our students. At this time, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Dr. Council, who very rarely joins me up here, to show how staffing is also impacting the data.
Sure, sure. And based on, thanks so much, Dr. Kelly, based on what Dr. Kelly has already shared and what you already know, we know that our district is faced with many challenges or have been faced with many challenges over the past few, few years. One of those challenges that we faced due to the pandemic is, is chronic absenteeism. And if you take a look at the slide above, chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of school days. So what the new federal data, what the new data shows is that chronic absenteeism continues to rise among teachers in public schools nationally. This slide shows that more than 70% of the schools that surveyed, if you can see that first light blue line from the top, that 70% of schools surveyed had more absenteeism for teachers since the pandemic started. The blue line above it represents, tells us that in 21, 2021 through 2022 alone, 49% of schools had higher chronic teacher absences compared to the prior year. Our next slide shows.
So I don't think Trevor, can you update that very quick or is it not? Yeah, okay.
I can.
You have, the board has that one, I guess, for this presentation.
Great. Not a problem. But in that slide, the report highlights that schools serving high concentrations of students of color are particularly likely to see teachers miss more than 10% of school days in 21 through the 22 school year. That data shows that schools surveyed with greater than 75%, so they actually break it down, less than 25%, 25 to 50%, 75% to 100% of students of color. But in that chart, it says that the schools surveyed that had greater than 75% of students of color, out of that, 55% of those schools have seen an increase in chronic absenteeism as compared to the pre- previous school year. That represents 21%, if we had the slide up there, you would see it represents a 21% increase compared to the schools with less than 25% students of color. So that chart did an excellent job of comparing different schools, those with 75% or more students of color and those with 25% or less. And we continue to see that schools serving high concentrations of students of color are more likely to see teachers miss more than 10% of school days. Overall, chronic absenteeism, chronic absenteeism among teachers continued to rise last year. Overall, chronic absenteeism among teachers continued to rise last year compared to both before the pandemic and the year prior, according to data from the National Center of Educational Statistics. We see that in mostly already what we consider short-staffed schools, similar to our school district, teacher absenteeism has created yet another challenge for us. That is now being studied and brought to the forefront. So again, it has not been a lot of conversation regarding chronic absenteeism, but it's our job, obviously, to bring it to your attention and share with you what we're doing to confront this issue. What I found also in the data, similar to what is happening here in our district, is that three out of four public schools now frequently pull other teachers or non-teachers, non-teaching staff to cover classes either during their prep, or they're relying on these teachers to cover during their prep. Again, this is a national problem. This can pull, what we also know is that when teachers have to cover, when they have to cover classes or utilize their prep time, that we know that this can pull down the climate of the school as well as connection, their connection with students. So chronic absenteeism have been connected to more than just outbreaks, pandemic outbreaks or illness. We can also connect that absenteeism to family difficulties and financial difficulties that our employees or our teachers are experiencing as well. So here in our district, we're seeing trends that's similar to what the data is showing. The data from last year, 2021 through 2022, shows that at our high school alone, and Dr. Mieri brought this out in another meeting outside the district, that at our high school alone, we've had over 8,000 instances of instruction disrupted by absences. And I just want, you know, to kind of like let that sink in, that again, over 8,000 instances of instruction disrupted by absences here in the district. I will share more current data next month during our staff and update. So as we look at this slide, we see that there's a lot that we have to look forward to, I guess, in the future, a lot of things that we have to overcome. A number of challenges, as you can see there on the screen, with probably one of the highest ones or one of the biggest challenges, again, is our staffing shortage. We will continue to experience shortages. It's expected that these shortages will continue in what we consider hard-to-fill positions. Dr. Kelly already mentioned the issue around trans latency. Also, on the screen, the COVID challenges. We still are seeing positive cases and have to deal with that in our schools. We will continue to address the academic regression at the same time being fiscally responsible as we deal with, as we operate within our budget. So I just want to share that again. Next month, I'll bring forth a staffing update where we will be able to provide some additional details as well as discuss what we've done out of the Office of Human Resources to overcome some of these challenges that we're experiencing and some recommendations for the future.
So at this time, the curriculum supervisors will be joining me. I'm going to kick out Dr. Council. Sorry. And we're going to discuss some of the trends in the standards and highlight some of the areas of strength and then look to discuss some of the areas where we need to provide some more focus. I'm going to turn over the presentation first to Mr. Schwartz, who is going to begin with a discussion of our math trends that we see.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So, an analysis of the 2022 PSSA math data showed that the standards listed on the slide here were strengths in grades three through eight. Note that all but one of the slides, or note that all but one of the standards are in bold. Bold standards are considered major standards of the grade level with a recommendation that 65 to 85% of class time per year should focus on these standards. The design of the PSSA follows these recommendations when delineating points and the number of questions to certain topics. Next slide. Thank you. This is the same one? Oh, no, sorry. The next slide lists the areas for growth in grades three through five. Of the standards listed, only the numbers and operations standards are considered major standards. And while all mathematical learning is important, the major standards should be our most immediate focus and concern. Any new learning in subsequent grade levels are dependent upon skills and strategies within these standards. Next one. Of the areas for growth at the middle school level, you'll notice the ratios, rates, and proportionality standards and expressions and equation standards are bolded, again indicating that they are major standards of the grade level. The clusters of standards related to ratios, rates, and proportionality are especially significant as they underpin much of the future work in eighth grade and Algebra I. On the Algebra I Keystone Exam, our greatest strength is in the field of coordinate geometry, which primarily focuses on describing and using the graph of a line on a coordinate plane. This is the culmination of work that begins in grade seven, where students learn to understand slope of a line as the beginning of rate of change. The greatest area for growth and improvement was in solving linear equations algebraically. Any deficit in this area underscores the importance of providing students enough opportunities to grapple with visual representations of mathematics before attending to the abstract equations, just kind of, you know, just 3X plus 2Y. My final slide, please. Thank you. My final slide's a non-exhaustive list. I won't go through, you know, the whole, read it. It's a non-exhaustive list of the various efforts being made to address the areas for growth and further advance our strengths. Many of the activities, such as any content-specific professional development, alignment of Tier Two supports to high-leverage skills, and the utilization of supportive software address specific skill deficits, while others, including program implementation training, our partnership with Making Math Matter, effective formative assessment practices, they all seek to inform and improve general math instructional pedagogy, hoping to raise our floor for everyone in all areas. Thank you.
We are going to shift our focus to ELA and you are going to see on the next two slides that we are looking at grades three through eight. It's important to note here that our teachers do a really thorough job with vocabulary instruction, which is content-specific, story-specific, and generative vocabulary. That's important because these are critical to developing strong comprehenders and especially in light of our ever-rising EL population, vocabulary and building background are critical so that they can understand what they're reading. These are our areas for growth. And you want to note that both of these areas require a tremendous amount of high-level thinking on the part of our students. They are challenged to manipulate text and formulate responses. And when it comes to the text-dependent analysis part, they need to then take that response and formulate a five-paragraph essay that does require the content to be correct, the syntax to be correct, and the Conventions of English to be correct. So it's definitely a challenge, we're asking little people to do very challenging work. I'm going to pass it over to Kathy to talk about the high school.
The slide that you're looking at now represents our Keystone Literature exam. All 10th-grade students at Upper Darby High School are encouraged to take the Keystone exam. It has two modules. Module one is fiction literature and module two is nonfiction literature. Our strengths are in line with the rest of the state of Pennsylvania. We are pleased that deliberate professional development and teaching students how to analyze nonfiction text in all subject areas is beginning to pay dividends as seen in the scores. Next slide, please. This shows our areas for growth. After I said that analyzing and interpreting fiction literature is a strength, it seems counterintuitive to say that reading fiction for meaning is a weakness based on the anchor descriptors here. A broader perspective reveals that one- or two-word descriptors do not do justice to the depth of knowledge that the state expects our students to demonstrate on the test. I'm going to give you an example of a question. Students are asked to analyze how an example from the text supports the author's purpose. In order to answer it, they must be able to infer the author's purpose. Another example, students are asked how the author uses techniques of fiction to effectively communicate an idea. The list of techniques of fiction is pretty long and complicated for students to interpret. So this is an area for growth that we are working on right now. Back to you, Kristin.
Just passing it back and forth. So what are we doing about this? Well, I think it's important to note that although the data is starting in grade three that you're looking at, the real work begins with our kindergarten students. And our superintendent has made it a part of our district goals that we are really emphasizing that K-2 programming and really building those foundational skills. So when we're looking at our action steps, we're really looking at supporting teachers in kindergarten through 12th grade. Just to highlight a few of the things that we're doing, and we really are trying to approach this in multiple ways. We have our formal professional development, which is really building teacher content knowledge. We have several data meetings throughout the year where we're really analyzing those particular strands. And then we have teachers setting individual student and class goals and setting action steps to reach those goals. We have targeted learning walks where we are going into classrooms and really differentiating our feedback for teachers, which is really important when you think about all the staffing that Dr. Council talked about because we have teachers that are brand-new teachers and we also have teachers who have been with us for a very long time and they require very different levels of support to get them where we want them to be with the students. And then we have all of the administrators that we're working with at the building level, especially this year, lots of new administrators. And we want to make sure that we are all on the same page supporting teachers and students at the building level.
Just as a reminder, because you and I have this debate, much as I've had a debate with Ms. Kenya. I guess, if you want to keep your own score. And Board President Brown had asked me, excuse me, as a reminder, Foundations, you believe, is a key program here in the school. And I see Desiree shaking her head. So just to be clear, this board blessed us with supporting the implementation of that program recently. And so the fruits of that hard work, kindergarten first and second grade, are starting to happen. And this is the idea of how we learn how to walk, you know, before you run and you crawl before you walk and then before you run. Conceptually, students need to understand, and this is a big part of the school district, I want to make sure we're clear on this. This information we're providing tonight is a review of the standards because the scores throughout the state and the country have declined tremendously. As you presented earlier, students not attending school, opting out of testing, there's inconsistent data, and the state said, "Don't rely on the scores. Rely on where you're seeing some standards gaps to fill in where that work is." I know we have hundreds of kids in after-school tutoring, extended school-year opportunities, but you believe, based on the goal that I want to see happen, that from kindergarten through second grade, where we know we make our future, that the Foundations program, if you can just highlight that, is a key to helping students break down the code of reading.
So there is a tremendous amount of research around the science of reading. And I would love nothing more than to share it with everyone. However, basically what they're saying is there have been multiple approaches to teaching reading over the last however many years. If you even think back to when you learned how to read with like the red group, the blue group, that doesn't exist anymore. And with the ever-changing things that are happening, we are also forced to sort of retrain our teachers too, who may have learned even at the college level how to teach reading in a totally different way. But explicit phonics instruction, and Dr. McGarry and I do go back and forth on this because I think what he needs to understand about me is that it is not about Foundations as much as it's about teaching children explicit phonics instruction. We, as a district, we do, finally. We, as a district, have chosen, we chose Foundations as the vehicle to get us there because it's research-based and it's effective and we looked at the numbers in all of the other districts that are using it. And they did tell me it's going to take one to three years to really see results, which I'm extremely impatient, but that's the reality of that. So explicit phonics instruction means that we are teaching phonics skills to mastery. In other programs, you will see that they teach it for four weeks and move on regardless. But in Foundations, we don't move on until 80% of the students have reached that mastery level. So we are getting ourselves into a situation where we're not creating further gaps. And with other programs, you see that children become compensators. So we taught them to check for picture clues and to look at the words around them, to figure out what it meant. And by doing those things, we actually created some barriers because we want them using the strategies that we're teaching them to be able to decode those words. In addition to the explicit phonics instruction, however, is this other piece that we missed. We didn't miss it, but we've done a much better job of it over the last, I'm going to say, about year. In addition to explicit phonics instruction, students need to have time built into their curriculum to talk about, to transfer the skills that they're learning into decodable and accountable text. And there's a difference between choosing a leveled text versus choosing something that they're reading for fun versus choosing a grade-level text. There's like a million different texts they can choose. We are really, really emphasizing right now the decodable, accountable practice because that, in conjunction with the explicit phonics instruction, is what is going to set the district on fire. And next year at this time, we are going to have numbers, and Dr. McGarry's going to be like, "I knew you could do it." That's what I'm waiting for. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, sometimes when we get excited as educators, we also talk in code about decoding. And so I just want to simplify this and say that in our school district, as we all know, and the board knows this, but for the public, we've always had about a three-to-four-week gap because the school year is 180 days, 183 if it doesn't snow. That's an inside joke. But if it's sunny, we go to school longer than it's, if it snows, we go shorter. And, which is a problem, I don't like that. The reality is, we get our kids to a place in our elementary schools, kindergarten first and second grade, to almost being where they need to be by that grade level. And then the summer hits and we spend the first three weeks of school trying to catch it back up, ramping it back up. And what you're seeing in tonight's standards are, on certain tests, there could be a question in third grade that's three questions. And a kid could get one out of three and it doesn't hurt them in the third grade. Well, that same subject matter goes up to seven questions in fifth grade. And if they could not read the paragraph, and it literally could be in one paragraph, one multi-syllabic word, right, like Mount Vesuvius, and then the background knowledge of what Mount Vesuvius is. If they can't decode that word and don't have the background knowledge of what that word is, the paragraph becomes something they can't comprehend. And then as a result, they can't take that and translate that to answering questions. For years, schools have moved away from skill training. Here's this letter, here's the sound it makes. When you combine that letter or that vowel together, which is blending, how do you make a word? Donsense words list, letter fluency. There was a period of time where that was important. Then we moved away to whole language, which was an approach where it was, I use this approach. I say it was much more of a lovey-dovey way of wanting kids to learn to read, virtues, there's a skill in drilling to learn how to read these sounds. We're getting back to making that happen. So the other, the debate that goes on is that not everybody's a reading teacher. That's the other problem. So when someone comes out of school to be a first-grade teacher, it doesn't mean they were really taught how to be a reading teacher. And so a program is one thing. Foundations, we still, what we've layered into here is the Ames School in Mannyunk, which is also training as many of our teachers as we can to understand first-grade reading and second-grade reading. Where 15 years ago, 10 years ago, we relied on a reading specialist because we had so few kids who needed reading. Now, we're putting much more pressure on a first and second-grade teacher because there are fewer people certified in reading. So simply put, kindergarten students are coming in and they don't know the letters of the alphabet. Let's say 25% of them know the letters of the alphabet to say them. Then, they're behind in the sounds that they make. And so that is essentially what we're having to reteach first, second grade. And now add to the fact that some of these kids, some of the parents kept their kids out of kindergarten during COVID because it was a virtual kindergarten. So they missed kindergarten and some of them may have missed first and second grade. And now we're trying to catch up on that skill, not just we, I mean, public education, not just Upper Darby. And this program is going to help build those foundational skills, but it's going to take time. going to take time.
At this point, we're going to transfer from Kristin's reading over here that she loves to talk about to science. So Mrs. Riches was not able to join us tonight, so I'm going to present our findings in science. Analyzing science is a little bit difficult because of how the test is structured. So students in, students only take the science test in fourth grade and in eighth grade. So there are many gaps, and those standards keep layering on top of each other. So you will see in fourth grade and eighth grade, we have some similar strengths, and it's very important to keep that spiraling of curriculum occurring here so that those standards continue to be addressed. So that's what you see in fourth grade with the life cycle that is taught both in second grade, third grade, but then assessed actually in fourth grade. And then you see something similar in eighth grade, when we're talking about weather, in that the standard is assessed in eighth grade. However, weather is connected throughout many of our experiences, so students tend to, that tends to be a strength for eighth grade students. Areas for growth really comes down to the problem solving process for both fourth and eighth grade students. Again, they're the only two assessed grade levels for science, that's where the PSSA is. And this is definitely one of those areas that are being stressed in the new science standards that are now being adopted for this school year. Not to be implemented right now, but to start the planning process of implementing new standards. So Pennsylvania just recently adopted them a few months ago, and now they, we will start to shift to these new standards, unlike math, they're giving, and ELA back in 2014, they're giving us time to implement these standards and get them set, and then set the assessment to be given in 2025. That's the tentative timeline right now for the state to change the assessment. They're also thinking about changing the grade level in which the student is assessed, maybe to a fifth grade assessment rather than fourth grade. For biology, this is an area of strength. The biology exam are for students that are enrolled in biology as ninth or 10th grade students. It is a requirement that all, that a student in high school takes the biology exam at some point before their 11th grade year, where you start to capture those accountability pieces, which I'll talk about in a second when I talk about the Keystone exams. But this exam has two modules, and the strength comes in module one and module two, when we're talking about the cell structure and cell process, as well as the continuity of Our area for growth in biology also is a little bit trickier because of where we assess. So we assess in fourth grade, we assess in eighth grade, and then we assess in ninth or 10th grade. This is one of the strands that is the broadest strand that is tested in environmental and ecology. And this strand is one of the eight new content divisions in the new standards. So they divide up the standards differently in this new release of the science standards, and will allow us now to have some, some time to adjust our curriculum to address one of these big content divisions. They also, in the new standards, talk about the science and engineering practices, very similar to those eight mathematical practices that they adopted in 2014 with math standards. So very, very similar in their adoption of how the standards look, but giving us more time to actually address them and make some revisions to our curriculum. Lastly, I know that we presented a lot of information tonight, and it's going to take some time to digest. So a few sites that parents and the board, the public can access are here, available to everyone. We also have the Upper Darby YouTube parent videos that help to support the student, or the, the parents at home, as we're talking about early literacy skills and early math skills, that is always available through our YouTube channel. So I want to thank you tonight for your attention, and I want to see if there's any questions at this point, because I do know that there is a lot of information.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Are there any questions, comments from the board? Director Williams?
First, thank you so much for your presentation. It was very thorough, as always. My question is about the math section. I know you mentioned in math that one of the things you wanted to do here for the math action steps was for, to utilize, utilize iXL to target individual areas of growth. So my question about iXL, I know you do use it already, but what is the time, like the goal you have for each of the grade levels for the weekly usage to try to already prevent some of the?
Sure. Forgot about this. iXL, you know, from their research, they have something what they consider the iXL effect. And the iXL effect includes, you know, 15 minutes per day or 60 minutes total per week for a student to get the full maximum benefit out of the program. Anything less than that, you may not be taken advantage of. Anything more, you know, as we know with anything with kids, you know, the more they do things, it has kind of diminishing returns when they use it too much. Our hope for iXL though is, you know, it is, you know, no more or less than, you know, distributive practice. It is not a substitution for instruction. So the one thing we've made clear with our teachers is, you know, iXL, the student should not be using iXL during our 60 minutes of core instruction. You know, it is practice, it is a tool, thank you, sorry. It is a tool for, you know, and Dr. Hag, you know, you and I have spoke about this before. It is a tool for practice so that, you know, you're not burning worksheets, and it can be, you know, tiered for kids depending on the level. And it does, you know, excellent help in that way, so you're not giving everyone the same worksheet and the same sort of questions. But our real gains will not necessarily come from iXL. Our gains will come from instruction, and where iXL helps is in diagnosing some of the deficits for, for assigning skills specific to some of those deficits in our MTSS period, and that it aligns to NWA map as well. So when we input, we input all those scores through Bob Holinsky and through that system, we send all our iXL skills, so it, you know, gives students a list of which skills they should be working on.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Director Williams. President Brown?
Yep, just a quick question and then a comment. Can you tell me more about the YouTube videos? Does it cover the standards? I'm hoping that it doesn't go in the list level of detail that would probably scare the parents away, but I mean, what kind of aid does it provide? If you can just give me a better feel for how it helps the, the parents?
So what we do is, every week, we push out math and ELA videos. For ELA, I rotate between the early literacy skills and then skills that would benefit parents who are trying to help their students with reading and comprehension. So knowing that we have targeted informational text right now, the upcoming videos are about the kinds of questioning and things that you could do, how to, a lot of, a lot of what I see parents need, and I am a parent too, so I see this with my own kids, is that it's hard to get kids to want to read at home, and the finding something that they are interested in, especially something that's nonfiction, well, sometimes it's more interesting, but can be a challenge. So our first set of videos that you'll see have to do with resources that are available on Class Link, that the district provides, that parents may not even realize they have access to, like Epic, and different online tools where they can search for things of interest. So the, and we're actually, our next one that's coming up is going to be Outside Sellers Library, because we want parents to realize that there's lots of different things in the community that they could do to get these free resources that they have for kids. So we are like slowly, this year, I was pretty intentional about it, we're slowly building in, this is where the resources are, and then once we get them in your hands, this is the kind of thing that you can do with them to help reinforce what we're doing here at school. For the early literacy piece, it's, it's a lot about the sounds, making sure that the parents know the sounds and they can support their kids, even if it's just watching me do it, because sometimes it could be challenging for our parents at home. And then what the kids, we, I'll say in my videos, this is what we do at school, so you can see how we teach it, and then this is what you can do at home if you want to help us practice it. So it's kind of like a twofold there. So I have both going on. Rob's a superstar too, though.
I'm getting better every week at them, though. I like them every week. The math videos are specific to content, all around the idea that, you know, the question I hear most, both, you know, in this job and honestly in my own life, is, you know, I didn't learn it that way. So I, I take that as an opportunity to, you know, to educate. So it, there's one on there about using a number line for, you know, adding within 10, to understanding how to compare fractions, to, you know, other ways to understand multiplication as, it was three times four, the same as four times three. So I'm really just kind of picking off, you know, what I hear, the questions that I hear most often in some high leverage areas, so that if people have questions again about, I didn't learn it that way, you know, it's my opportunity to do that and provide it in a visual way.
Thank you. That was very informative. Do you guys use Jason to produce your videos?
No.
No?
I suppose.
You just post them? Wow, you're doing this? Wow. I'm really impressed.
The lighting of the lighting of the lighting could be better.
So this, this is, this, this is birthed out of the idea that I have been on, Dr. Kelly, that I want, of the first video I wanted, as I want, I want our own kind of economy for parents to go to, to help practicing homework and working with kids, that if we don't feel comfortable ourselves, that they can go to, like, here's the stuff that we're talking about, you can pull it up, and you can work with your child on it. It was really, came out of one particular conversation that I was really worried about is teaching blending and how to read. And so making sure that our parents know the appropriate sounds and how to say letters and to make those blends happen is what the first video, and we found some of our teachers didn't know how to make appropriate blends. So I asked to create this video montage, starting really with how to teach the sounds of the letters and blending, and they've turned it into their own educational YouTube for parents for homework.
Thank you for adding that. Very impressive. And my last thing is just a comment, just really a kudos. It's, it's clear you have all the right people in place, the, the right team. Everybody is so infectious about what they're teaching, everybody is a subject matter expert, and we're lucky to have you all, so thank you for your work.
Thank you, President Brown. Any other comments or questions from the board? Director Mitchell?
Just real quick, I'm just so thrilled to see the focus on early literacy that we have put in place, the foundations. It's going to be a major game changer for every child, not just regular ed students, but special ed students as well will benefit immensely. I'm so excited to see this report next December.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Anyone else?
No pressure.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Dr. Kelly, would you like to move on to agenda item number two?
So this next presentation is just an overview of our Pennsylvania Keystone exams. So as I just mentioned with the results that we had in the standards, this is how we get there. So beginning, believe it or not, in September, we start planning for this first administration of the Keystone exams, which is wave two, or the winter assessment. So this high school team does a tremendous job in, starting in September by order, by ordering books. We order a thou, over a thousand books in each tested subject area, math, ELA, and science, or biology. And that's where this process begins. So the Keystone exams is now a graduation requirement, beginning with this class. So that is nothing new, we've talked about it over and over again. Mrs. Simone has been up here numerous times talking about Act 158 and how it is starting with the class of 2023. When we first presented it, class of 2023 sounded very far away, and now it's right in front of us. So we are gearing up for now this next administration. Remember, that is not just one pathway that students can take to it, to reach this Act 158, or to demonstrate proficiency, that there are alternate pathways, but this is just one pathway that the students are proficient in one or more of the Keystone exams. Also, the Keystone exams, like I mentioned before, have an accountability issue, or accountability tied to it as well. So by 11th grade, students need to take the assessment in math, or Algebra I, biology, and literature. So as soon as we get back from break, the fourth, that Wednesday, we start with our Algebra I exams. So they will take the exams, our students, probably about, about a thousand of them will take the Algebra I exam on January 4th and 5th, followed by literature, and then followed by biology. So we have six days of testing abbreviated schedules. We have been communicating this since early December with our parent, well, sorry, end of November really, with our parents that the assessment was, was going to be starting, and that schedules are going to be changing, and these are the testing windows, or the testing dates that we have.
I just want to add, the reason why it's even more complicated in Upper Darby is because we have so many more students that have to test and take it in a block schedule in comparison to other schools who might not be a block, who have the full year, and it's set differently where they can take it, and they have smaller numbers and less worry. Remember, in Pennsylvania, which we didn't discuss tonight, if you're reading the Inquirer and you're reading around other school communities, Act 158, the graduation requirement in Pennsylvania, is still tethered in some ways to Module One and Module Two of Keystone exams. It's still part of the pathway. So what's complicated in Upper Darby is we have to try to test in just about as many windows as we can sooner with students, because there are so many students that have to have the opportunity to make up certain modules, to make that pathway a reality, if that's the pathway they want to use for graduation. It's another complicated aspect of a larger urban school district.
And just some general testing information for parents and guardians as we begin this testing window. The Pennsylvania Department of Education prohibits electronic devices, so our teachers and our proctors are responsible for collecting all cell phones, smartwatches, and anything like that. They cannot be, they can, they have to be turned off. We have a great system for doing all of this, but it is again, another piece of just how complicated it is when we have to, when we get to this testing wave and this window. If a cellphone is found or an electronic device is found, then we do have to go through some proper procedures with the state, as well as our school policies that we have, or procedures that we have to follow at that point. The other piece to review here is if a parent does not want their student to take the assessment because of a religious belief. There is a policy, which is Policy 127, that we have to adhere to, and that parents are required then to contact the school principal. Again, all of this has been outlined for parents already, but this is just an overview for anybody in the public that is listening, that is ready to take the assessment. So they do have to come in, meet with the principal, review the assessment, sign a confidentiality agreement, review the assessment with the proper person at the district, and then request written permission and exemption from the superintendent, all which gets filed back to the state and filed with our, at a central level and also at the building level. So there are many different avenues and things that we have to adhere to as we gear up for this first testing, or this first testing window.
And Dr. Kelly, we have to store this for three years, correct?
Correct. So each testing window that we have, we have to keep down to seating charts with, at the building level, at the district level for these assessments. So it is a lot of organization, it is a lot of, you know, making sure that we have all of the things in place that we need to. And like we said in our first presentation and this presentation, we are testing a lot of children on top of it. So about a thousand each testing window in the elementary schools or the PSSA, and then here, we're doing it twice, because there is a spring window as well as this winter window. So it's a lot of testing, a lot of organization. So that's it for the Keystone administration. Are there any questions at this point?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any questions from the board or comments? Director War Savage?
Thank you very much. It's not so much a question as it is a comment. Testing, I mean, that was a great presentation, but having to test all these different standards, and I know this is something that we brought up before, in spite of the fact that the district and all of our teachers and our administrators already have ways that we test our students. and all of our teachers and our administrators already have ways that we test our students ourselves to these standards and make wise use of the limited time and resources that we have. I hope as we have a new state government being sworn in in January, and as they have different constituent groups taking a look at things like how we address public education when they take a look at standardized testing, I hope they do consider all the time and resources that it does take to pull this kind of thing off and maybe reconsider again, not necessarily making it easier for students to graduate, but making it more realistic for school districts as diverse as ours to be able to meet more students where they're at and teach to their strengths instead of focusing so much on their weaknesses and what a particular overruling state guideline has to say about it, just my two cents.
Thank you, Director Worsavich. Time is now for public comment. We will first address any in-person public comments. Was there any signed-in public comments? Seeing none, now we will go to any online or phone comments?
Board member David Neal, there wasn't a message left, but it was air, and there was no message left, and we emailed back twice to that. Other than that, there were no comments that came in via voice message or email, and there obviously are no in-person participants here this evening.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comment. Dr. Kelly, could you please have a review of tonight's agenda?
Absolutely. So the first item was our annual review of the Pennsylvania State Assessment Data. That was an informational presentation. And the second item was the Keystone Exam Winter Administration Window, which was also informational.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kelly. I hand this meeting back over to President Brown.
Thank you, Director Neal. A motion is in order for the adjournment of the Education and People Services Committee meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night and have a great holiday, a safe and great holiday, everyone. Thank you, take care.